Good morning. It is Friday, February ninth, twenty twenty four. It's seven o'clock A M. This is a regular school board meeting of the Oaks Public School District Board. We are meeting at the Southeast Region Career Technical Center Community Room in Oaks and via Zoom. Uh, we will stand to say the Pledge of Allegiance. And when we call, there's a flag. Come on back here. Oh, thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The agenda was in your packet. There were a couple additions to our packet, but no recent changes to the agenda itself, just some additional information. Is there a motion to approve the agenda? Nagel moves to approve the agenda. Is there a second? Sire, seconds. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. All those opposed say no. The motion passes. Welcoming of visitors. Um, we have Mr. Engel, Mr. Spellerberg, and Mr. Brockman in the room, and we have both Sue and Marcia with us.
Just Marcia?
No. Sue is out of town.
All right, and anyone else joining us remotely today?
Just some teachers.
Okay.
Laurie Christensen.
And Laurie Christensen. Welcome all. Uh, just, uh, just for your information, it is Career Tech Education Month, and in recent years, we have been holding our February meeting here at the Career Tech Center in honor of Career Tech Ed Month, and that is also, this is also the month when we welcome, um, an update from our partners at the Career Tech Center. So I'll call on Mr. Spellerberg and Mr. Brockman to, uh, tell us all the great things our students are doing here this year.
Thank you. Uh, it's a pleasure to truly be able to come around and give you guys an update on really the things that we're doing here at the center, uh, for your students. And, uh, so opportunity for you guys to ask questions, uh, opportunity for you guys to get a little bit of information. So I'm gonna highlight, uh, a few things in this packet. I'm not gonna exceed a ton of minutes here. But we did add a, a program in Hankinsin this year, and so that added a few more students to our total overall membership. Uh, now exceeding nineteen hundred students, so we're excited about that. Uh, we are in the process of, uh, building a facility over in Edgely that will provide additional options with some, uh, in partnership with, uh, the state C T E, uh, with some federal dollars that were allocated for a capital improvements project. So we are excited about some, uh, expanding opportunities that we have. So really our tidbits, quick facts, uh, it's a one pager, highlights a lot of our staff. We have a lot of them here in this building. Uh, you have one in your building, uh, specifically Mr. Wentworth, and, uh, we hopefully are providing great opportunities for the students, classes. So, uh, it is, like I said, a treasure to come back, hear the kids, hear the community people talk about the things that are happening. And so, um, I, I like to bring up something different a little bit to hopefully educate you guys, uh, on what's happening, but, um, I like, I'm gonna bring Perkins before you and Perkins dollars. But, uh, as a school district, if the allocation, uh, towards your district does not exceed the fifteen thousand dollar mark, uh, then really you can't, as a local school district, claim Perkins dollars. And so what we've done is we've created consortiums, and so the Southeast, Oaks is a part of the Southeast, and there's six schools, a part of our Richland, uh, consortium. And so we manage those two consortiums, and those dollars have to be allocated towards C T E program. And so, uh, how we get there is we, uh, reach out to you folks, um, reach out to advisory committees, and we look for resources to fill out this comprehensive local needs assessment. And that's something that, um, our advisory committees that our groups have formed helps formulate and say, here is what our community needs, uh, for jobs, equipment, and, and all of that such. And so that helps drive our decisions on what type of equipment we're buying with our Perkins dollars. And so that kind of, I just wanted to educate you a little bit. It's not a, a huge dollar amount that we are getting, but every year we get some dollars allocated federally, uh, to help. And so, um, for this year, we, uh, there's a whole list of things that we got, equipment and so forth, but, um, Perkins dollars are a big part, um, of being able to supply some equipment and new equipment to our local uh, and member schools that have approved C T E programs. So I wanted to highlight that, um, grants as a whole. We're exceeding a hundred and sixteen thousand dollars right now, and it's growing, which is great. Um, one of the bigger ones to highlight is, uh, E V trainer. Um, and so we are purchasing two E V trainers, one for our east side. Um, that'll be stationed really at the campus, N D S C S campus, and then one for our west side. So it's gonna be split between Edgely and, uh, Edgely and Oaks here, between our auto programs. And, um, so those things where I think we really need to edu- educate our students about the things that are coming. You know, we may think that electric vehicles are not gonna be here for quite a while, but folks, I was at a conference in, uh, November where I stepped into a self-driving car. So this type of technology is coming, it's going to be here, and, um, we need to educate our kids about it. And so, um, whether or not you're on the E V bandwagon or not, I think it's something that'll be an important part of educating our kids. And so, uh, we're excited about those trainers. They should be showing up here shortly, and, um, that's not something that I'll say every school's gonna have. And so, uh, we're excited about that. Uh, beyond that uh, is the scholarship count, and this is from the twenty-three graduating class. And so this is, uh, current where, uh, we had twelve of thirty-nine students from Oaks Public School, uh, with a total overall percent of just, uh, under thirty-one percent, uh, with a state average of twenty-two percent. And so, uh, again, exceeding the state goals and, um, well, they're not the goal of the state, but exceeding the state average. And, um, I think that's because of all the C T E opportunities, um, that your students have. If you look at the ratio of C T E scholarships in the academic, it's it's a good deal. Uh, and so that's six thousand dollars per student that qualified. So awesome opportunities, I would like to point that out. Um, a- another section in this book is, um, a few pages on work-based learning. I am not going to read page by page for you. Uh, what I've done is it's kind of the new buzz right now. It's taking over what we used to call co-op learning, and, uh, our goal is to get, uh, more work-based learning opportunities for students. And we've got a person hired here, he's still going and finishing up, uh, he's finished, just finished his training. So he's finished his training, and he's been meeting with local schools, local principals, uh, local counselors about explaining how the program works, uh, and then meeting with business and industry professionals as well. And so he's gonna be that individual that hopefully helps connect the students to job opportunities. And that's from our kid here on the west half, and he's been serving a few different schools. Um, we have another position over on the east side I have yet to fill. I've already got applicants, it's, it's in the vault. Um, but, uh, what I can tell you is work-based learning is a, a big push from the state right now, and we're excited to support it. And we're looking forward on how we can help schools utilize that. So I provided a few different pages of what like, uh, an employer, um, I'll say evaluation form looked like, uh, an approval letter. Kid? I'm gonna skim back to the very back where we got, uh, assessments. So assessments are, like I said, try to hide anything. Those are our local assessments, what, uh, across our member schools, and membership is based on, um, the services that you are provided. And so, um, if you think of hiring a teacher right now, uh, benefits and everything, uh, we're looking at about a hundred and twenty thousand per teacher, and so we don't have least, um, you know, we look at benefits and everything, uh, supplies, teacher retirement, all the, all the factors that go into it. We gave quite a few teachers, uh, on the both the bang for the buck, I think this is pretty good is, is what you're getting. And if you have questions, definitely ask, uh, that does include your counselor in there as well. So, um, but, uh, one of the, the last thing I'll leave you with is we are, uh, recently just kind of piloting a C and A course uh, that is a partnership with Science School, and it's pretty exciting. I know the state has just kind of came down and said that we used to be able to have our E M T students and health science students challenge the C and A test, uh, for whatever reason, they're not allowing that anymore. As of like a month ago, uh, they, uh, kicked out and said, no, you can't do that anymore. And so luckily, we have this partnership with, uh, Science School, really recently established, and, uh, still have the ability to give kids that are interested in getting that C and A, uh, certification. And so, uh, it's seventy-five hours they gotta put in, it's online mostly. Sixteen of the hours have to be done in person at some type of a facility, uh, which is done here in town. And so we, we're looking at how that high-grade version looks. An opportunity against the, it's a dual credit class, it's about that. It's in credentials. Keep telling my mom, my mom's a nurse of, uh, forty-seven, almost forty-eight years now, and she goes, you ever gonna find a replacement for me? So I, I keep telling her, I do my best to find a replacement, but, um, it is a profession we need.
So Miss Rockman, if you wanna highlight? Yeah, just, uh, I wanted to touch on the high tech stuff. This is a list of what we currently offer, uh, available to all of your teachers, not just the ones that work out here at the center. One of the big ones that I always like to talk about is, is really cool and useful piece, and this is at an animal watch table. It's basically a dissection table, there's animals on there, there's humans on there. Uh, we just have a current version that we updated now, we have a simulated bird on there. So, um, a lot of really neat and informational, thanks for the kids to work with. We did just have a training out here on Tuesday, Tuesday, and, uh, there were ten teachers that came home from the surrounding areas. Got the training on it. Lady that did the training connected to the table remotely from California, and we set up a Zoom call. So we were able to communicate back and forth, and I think it actually went pretty well. Um, one of the students in class got up and manipulated the table, you know? Everybody else kept sat and watched. It was, it was, I think, it went better than I anticipated, so. We do have three of them now. Uh, we have two of them that are a different version. The new one is almost probably like that T V that's up there. Good, but it'll tilt flat, or it'll stand up, or you wanna use it, but it's all touchscreen interactive. Unbelievable how much information is on that thing. It's, you could work on it for a week straight, come four hours a day, and you still wanna get through everything. It's, it's, uh, it's a pretty awesome piece of equipment. I always like to brag about that, so. But yeah, we, so if you're a science teacher, you know, interested, passionate, it is really one of those things that once a teacher gets it, you can train them, basically train them on, turn it on, get everything set up, get it going, but they really need to dig into it and work with it to fully understand. But yeah, like I said, any of these pieces of equipment are available to any of the teachers. It isn't just the ones that are out here at the center. You guys have any questions on any of the equipment that you're trying to answer?
Like I said, this is an opportunity for you guys to really ask questions or say, you know, why don't we have this pathway? Or let's take a look at this, uh, area. Super Ten Cell has reached out and indicated there are some areas that, uh, we'd like to possibly strengthen. Uh, we are looking at those, looking at those opportunities to continue providing, um, additional support, uh, just possibly C T E staff for, uh, different programs on the road as well. So we're constantly looking to see what we can do, see what we can add. Uh, if there's something, like I said, that you're interested in, let us know. But concerns, questions?
I understand. Perhaps to replace that. And that's an awesome opportunity for them to see what they potentially have.
I chatted down a couple of questions. Um, on the state scholarship winners, we had, uh, last year, twelve out of thirty-nine, or thirty-one percent, as you pointed out. Where, where, who knows where our students are falling short in even the requirements of scholarship? Is that our data?
I, I would say that's your data, more than likely, um, if I would guess, a lot of them actually struggled. The benchmark is twenty-four on the A C T, and if they don't get that twenty-four on the A C T, they gotta pass the work. So there's several kids that are working actively to pass those work keys, but we also have students that just throw their hands up and say, I gotta take another test. Um, and so there's some apathy, so it's just, you know, we, we can have, we can feed the, 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 the work test to them, but I, I would say that is probably the kids that are trying actively get it, I think, for that.
So do all students? Okay, so a few years ago, the state paid for all the A C T tests. Did that change so they don't pay for all state A C T tests anymore?
Correct.
Um, do we still expect all of our students to take the A C T test? Or could, could they just start with the work keys?
I think it's for the work keys.
Is that a pathway that might lead to more success?
A- and I would say the kids that do, that's the area that they're qualified in is the work keys. And so I believe that would be Mr. Landworth, he would know. Um, and, and he would have a better idea how many kids were really trying to get it last year than didn't make the work. Um, I could ask him, but good question, but I, I, I really do think the kids that are actively trying and wanting.
And it is kind of funny, they're not funny, but some of the kids, they say, well, I'm going out of state on that, you know? They, they could qualify, but they don't follow through with it because I'm going out of state. And that's, we, we really try to push it though because they can use it for up to six years, and a lot of those that go out of state could come back.
Yep.
So we still try and push it, but we'll have a number of kids who say, no, I'm not. I would say, and the parents back then.
Of the, of the counselors that we have, the eight counselors we have, they said that is the biggest. They said kids get an idea in their head that they're going to Minnesota, they're going to South Dakota. It's not gonna apply to me, I don't need to, and so they kind of made up a mind. So we can continue trying to push that, and, and I think making sure that they know that they can use it six years later.
If they complete a four-year or a two-year in an out-of-state institution and then choose to transfer to an in-state for, to complete the graduate degree or to go to a post-grad degree, it's still available.
Still enough, it's, it's good at any high school or college, and actually, no, they can even use it like some core training centers like that, that's well, it's available.
Second question I wrote down, um, you talked about the amazing animatage table, if I, if I emphasize the right syllables. Um, I know there's a lot of other cool equipment with the, um, the drones and different things, robotics. Uh, to what extent, can we get some video of that, of the kids using that stuff that we can share out on our social media or our, our website? Because there are some cool things happening, and I would love to say, well, let's have an open house and get the public in here to see this stuff, but we know how that works. Uh, but I think if we could see some, some real cool video of you using this stuff, we could, we have the, the ability to blast that out to people who should be interested in, who will, will see it and recognize how cool it is. And this is really high, expensive equipment, and you guys do such a great job of, you know, I don't know, somebody wise once said, we don't let it, where, we don't let it rust out, we win it. Have you ever heard that before?
I've heard it.
Yeah, we have, yeah. Did you say that that was a, a tip, like a to do biopsies or?
Yeah, it's, it's a dissection.
Uh-huh.
Yeah.
Like humans or?
Yeah, oh yeah.
It's a simulator.
There's five, it's a simulator.
Okay.
There's five cadavers on there. And yeah, there's.
One looks just like you, Jen.
It's like you could pull it back and layer it.
Okay, it's unbelievable. I think that is awesome. Allison is in P T school, and that's what they do. They are at the medical center on pediatrics, I mean, they're working on pediatrics. And she tells me about, oh, some of the things she has to do, and I'm like, stop.
You don't get this, you don't get the smell of it, they.
That, that would be awesome.
Update.
Yeah.
The smell, but that's milk.
Little kiss.
Yeah.
But you can nicely, you can pull up the skeletal system only, you know, you can pull up the respiratory system, the nervous system. You can pull up all of the different systems.
And think of how many kids that leave Oaks Public Schools, they go on the medical field, give any, anything.
We, you can, yeah.
Awesome.
Mrs. Works does agree to, uh, promoting.
So I, that reminds me of, I know, I, I expect it was at this meeting a couple of years ago that you referred to one of our students who left here and went, uh, to a precision ag program, probably at N D S U.
Yes.
I've already done all this. I've done, I've, I've had all this equipment, you know? Uh, what amazing opportunities we have for our students right here.
In our backyard, and so that, and that's our goal as a center, to continue to provide you guys and our students, um, in rural communities the most up-to-date, uh, technology and information we can. And so I hope we're doing it, and, uh, like I said, we come to you guys just to say, is there any, no, we can do it. So thanks again, um, if you have questions, definitely ask. Senator Lake does a great job representing us. Thanks, kid.
And, uh, I trust if anybody wants a little tour, maybe to go see that fancy table, uh, out there where it's, um, there will be a little time that you can look around. All right, nothing else for visitors then?
No, not.
All right, so then we're gonna move on to our section two, A, uh, progress monitoring of student outcome goals, and Mrs. Sell is going to be our only presenter on this today. May the principals stay back and work?
Yeah, yeah, um, Jordan and Greg are out in Gismarck at the, uh, principals conference, so they're learning all sorts of stuff. They went through the A I that I went through, and that's a great plan. So, um, so this month, uh, we're reporting on the G, uh, goal progress measures for two, one, two, two, and two, three, which, um, I'll scroll down, and it's in your packet too, but it, this is, um, that student outcome goal two is the one that focuses on math. So, uh, we're gonna increase the percentage of students who are proficient or above in grade three through eight.
What's the live high? Oh, can I just, I'll just do a guess, guess, okay, sorry, I thought, I thought I could get on this. Sorry, go ahead.
No, okay, and, uh, in grade three through eight, rate ten, as measured by the N D S A, um, from forty-eight percent in spring to, uh, eighty percent in spring twenty twenty-eight. So, um, just, just a reminder of that. So the goal progress measure focuses on our K through two learners, um, that, and our goal's now scores fifty percent or above on Star Math. So I've given you the last two years of data, and I tried to use the vertical line to separate that out, um, so that you can see what happens. And a couple of things to note, you can definitely see that, um, summer slide, right? And then, you know, the, the work throughout the year that the teachers do in order to, um, um, get the kids where they're at, and the learners doing their work also. Um, another thing to note is that in the past, we have fully used the fortyth percentile. And then we changed that to the fiftieth because our N D S A and, um, they were not aligning, and they, they really should. So we felt like we needed to, we're having a lot more kids that were proficient on Star, and they weren't, you know, scoring as well on N D S A. So we decided, after analyzing that data, that we needed to make some adjustments. So then this year, we moved it up to the fiftieth percentile. Um, you can see, uh, for this year, that our first testing, um, was, uh, you can see the percentage that was on there and then how much it grows. That is very, very common, especially in the elementary, that, um, the, the kids score far better in, in the winter, and you can see that from the, the years before. The blue is our goals. Those are our goal progress measure, those are the goals. So on grades K through two and G, are in, uh, G P M two, one, they're on target. So we obviously have surpassed what our goal was for our goal progress monitor. Two point two, that's our three through six learners, um, I, for, we had a huge summer slide, um, from last year. But again, we're, remember, we went to the fiftieth percentile instead of the forty. So we fully expected, you know, that we were gonna have less kids because the data just wasn't saying, um, what we wanted to say, this is supposed to be our predicted measure, and it wasn't giving us the prediction that we wanted. And those kids are, those grades are, this goal is also on target.
So you say it's on target, but yet the score is below the blue line, but it's going in the direction of, um, you know, we, we would hope to be up at, by the, by the one more time or two?
Two more, in the elementary, they will, they prep, no, that's two more times.
So assuming that there will be a summer slide again, we sure wanna get up above the blue line, right?
And I mean, you can see that, I mean, we've been, again, we're at the forty percentile, but we were, we've always done very well on that. Um, and so just a couple of things, and I visited with the, the principals and talked to them about, okay, so what, what do we wanna share? And, um, this is my, sir, my, you can read it, you know, that, um, they're, one of the focuses last year that they, uh, realized looking at that was our kids, their automaticity, by automaticity, I mean their ability to recall their basic facts. We had, used to have a program, you know, and we used that, and then that program ceased to exist, you know, we just didn't have something. Um, great, and these teachers through their research, they ended up finding Reflex Math, and now they are doing that, um, in those grades down there to try to get that automaticity back.
So the, the program for us older parents was that Math Dax and Flash?
Yes, Math Dax and Flash, do you remember that? When it, because we're in, in, yeah. And we haven't had, we had that for a long time, you know, and you, and you really want that automaticity because you've got that accuracy, and you've got that speed built in there. So then, then as you start to move yourself through, um, the different levels of math, you weren't having to do that basic computation because you have those, those skills. Um, in grades K through six, they group our learners using the star data, they look at their star data, they talk about it, they set goals. Um, they, you know, say to kids, hey, what are we gonna do? They're constantly watching their data, so then that increases their awareness of it, you know, puts that back on the kids for that agency and that personalization with the kids. So we are sending some teachers, um, you've heard of the science of reading, Ray wrote a big grant and got that big grant, science of reading. Now next is the, um, science of math. And we're sending teachers to that at the end of February, and then those teachers are gonna come back, and they're gonna present to the teachers at school already in the train-to-trainer model, uh, to, throughout the spring and next fall. Uh, our curriculum committee will meet one more time, we'll look at the data, um, we'll review that this spring and make suggestions. Okay, so regarding curriculum and accompanying resources, but we don't have a lot of wiggle room with curriculum because our state standards are what are, what is our curriculum. Um, they can make suggestions for resources, but that committee just makes suggestions, and then great teachers would decide what their resources are gonna be. So next school year, we're planning on implementing weekly data team meetings to allow time for deeper analysis of that student data. Um, we're working on some plans for a possible late start on Wednesdays to allow P L C time, um, and we're working on those, those, those plans. And we're working on those, those, those plans. Okay, now, full progress measuring two, three, now this is in high school, it's seven, eight. We do test nine, even though nine is not an NDS A year and that's not one of our goals. We do goal progress monitor because that continuity of then we can look and see where are our night vendors at. What are the skills that we need to make sure that they have? So when we are at the forty percentile, our kids were scoring well, we had, this is weird data, right? But they only test twice a year now, or they did test twice a year. This year they've done it three times and I think we're only going to be doing three until next year, then we'll be doing four. And that gives us just a chance to get some more data. But we started above our goal and we took a major slide over the winter, which is very unusual. That doesn't happen, you know, they come in back into school and then we should be one. But looking at the data and then digging deeper into individual kids and to see, you know, what is. What's happening and we had kids that have scored in the ninety percentile all the way along. And then all of a sudden they dropped to the first percentile and their tests only took like two minutes. So, you know, that's that piece where I'm addressing the response that. We just are struggling to instill that internal motivation with our kids. And part of that is our fault, right? We don't look at that data. We don't say, hey, where, yeah, what'd you score? Let's set a goal. We just don't really talk about it. So if we just take the test and we don't talk about it, it absolutely, it doesn't have any meaning for the kids. So we realized that and now we're, you know, starting to do some of those conversations of let's look where you're at, what do we need to do? And the teacher's looking at that data, but we're also doing some things in the programming because that internal motivation has waned for them. So we have to go back out to external, which we really don't want to do when they're in high school, right? Because we don't follow them when they go to college. We don't follow them when they go to take that ACT. But they have to have that internal motivation to do their best. So then you gotta take a couple of steps back and you gotta start doing some external motivation. So the high school teachers and Jordan have been working on a plan and during home room time at the end of the day, they built in a reward. So if the kids are scoring at fifty percent or higher above on star math and start reading, then they don't have to go to home room. Or if they're proficient on the NDS A, so there's a couple of different caveats, you know, that we, that they've got built in there trying to get the kids to see. You know, okay, this is important to us, so we're going to build in something. So the kids that are not that, they're going to start playing interventions. And we're looking at programming for the interventions, we're looking at what the elementary has used on freckle math. It used to just be an elementary program, well, now they've expanded into the junior high and high schools. There's been greater demand from those age for interventions for that. What's next there? We have said grade seven through twelve teachers that are going to be going to the science of math. Train to also this summer and then are not, sorry, not this summer, in February. And then they will be coming back and able to teaching it. So we're hiring subs, we're sending them off, we're, you know, paying to travel. So we expect them to come back with that information and share that information. Just anything we can to combat that because we are not on target to make our goal right now. And I I think with some changes in our practices, this this can change.
Adult behavior changes?
Adult behavior changes, you know, like let us be legendary safe until our adult behaviors change. Kids' behaviors to change.
During home room, aren't they also moving the kids around now to to do with? Like a teacher that they may be struggling in their class?
And you, I mean, you, you guys have your Q and A, but there were some really good questions like, okay, so what percentage of our kids, if they're passing their classes? Why are they not doing well on this? That's a great question, right? Because we, I and I did the kids that were seen above and I can't remember what the percentage was. But, you know, if you look at the different sets of data that we have, we should not have that low of a percentage of kids scoring below the fifty percentile. Because they're passing their classes, it is, you know, so there's, there's, there's disconnect there. And there's things that Jordan and the high school staff have to look at and they have to see, you know, what, what's the problem? Where are we missing those? And so those are those things that we're tackling right now is that, you know, trying to bring back in that external motivation. To get those kids, you know, there was a couple of kids that found out they weren't going to get out of home room. And they wanted to know why they weren't worried of this, you know, aren't you always supposed to do your best? Not just because you're going to get a reward at the end. So we are, they're going with it, you know, and Jordan talked about that. You know, that we, we just have to start to give back up our and develop kids that are internally motivated. Instead of kids that are externally motivated, which grades are an external motivation versus that internal motivation of attainment of skills and attainment of standards.
So could this be a part of? Your homework is due today and you turn it in and you're not done. So then the teacher is letting you do it, you know, the next year, the next year, the next day. So if kids aren't, or the teachers aren't holding kids responsible without some training at the right time. The kids feel that they have the steps to do is to keep working on stuff instead of being responsible and having to turn them at a proper date. Set date.
Right, I, okay, that's a really good question. There's a lot of stuff that's mixed in there because that's behaviors also and skills, right? So, you know, there's a whole bunch of different things mixed in there, so I, I can't answer you. That would be a great question for Jordan and his staff, you know, if we're looking at the behaviors versus the skills attainment, that's, you know. Those are two separate plots, which we still have co-mingled with our, our grades, right? With the way we do our grading system in the high school, those are co-mingled versus the standard pace where they're, we're working towards not co-mingling those two things.
I know, but. Any other job or else? Accountability, so if the kids are vulnerable, then maybe that'll make the kids wonder why they're not out of home room.
Right, and if they are, if they have got missing work, they don't get out of home room either. That's another one of those things and, but it gives them time to work on stuff, you know, and be with the teachers. So if it's a misunderstanding or just not finishing it, then they're, you know, having to stay. So, yeah, they're building in some of those accountability measures with that home room.
Good question. So when you identify these kids that are either on watch or intervention or urgent intervention. Is there a way to just put one in on that on those test scores so we can see who was at an urgent intervention? The last test?
Great question.
And how many have we gotten out of that so that we can identify what is working and what isn't? Let me pull that up.
So the teachers can see individual students and they're able to look and see and track where the kids are. And and see, you know, obviously I'm not going to be able to share that data with you, but Greg wanted me to share this and then I'll share Jordan. So here's Greg's K through six. If you remember last time how he did this, he's got the, oh, shoot, you're not seeing this now, are you?
It's in our pocket, it was, you added it to our pocket, right? With the, with the colored bars?
Yes, yeah.
That kind of makes my head spin, but.
Yeah, it's orange and black.
Still, you're still seeing that page, but let me, let me start share. Go back in and. Here and I will do this one to make sure this. Because I, I know Greg had said before, like you can see it's the differences in the, the orange or the orange and black there because people move back and forth. To actually like zero in on that urgent intervention and see how many and where they're at now.
Oh, yeah, they, they would be able to pull that out. And I'm betting that Greg is using a data wall like that and I, I, I can't tell you for sure for Jordan, but he does have the data in here. So you can see here where those kids, so you've got the red, the yellow, remember how last month it showed that, that. This orange was the first testing, this is the second testing. So you can see in first grade, you know, we can target that grade, but they would be able to go in there and they would be able to tell you. Like if Joey was in green, where is Joey now? And just from my past experience with this and a lot of times our kids that are the, not the troubles. But the ones you really want to focus on are those bubble kids, right? Those kids that can go either way. And then, you know, you focus in on getting them as many skills as you possibly can, but this is an amazing for first grade, isn't it, right? They, they had no yet reds, they have some yellows, but those yellows are now probably right there over here in blue. And then a lot of, you know, a lot of them moved green, so. But there's a ton of learning that goes on. I mean, they learn a lot when they come right away in first grade, which is amazing. And you can see second grade.
Okay, so Anna, can Anna, can I just get a clarification for somebody watching? Because I think the colors on the screen look different, so, because I'm seeing black. And I'm looking at numbers and I'm like, my gosh, they, they've got all these, you know, twenty five cent. But it, the, what looks to me is really blue and what looks black is really green.
Okay, so, okay, here's third grade, these are the red kids, these are the kids that are in urgent intervention. First testing and second testing. Event.
Okay.
These are yellow kids.
Okay, okay, now, okay, now I got it, I got it.
Does that make sense?
Orange and black are the first.
Yes, 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 yeah. Now I'm, now I'm seeing how to read it.
Okay.
And the one thing that I do like about these reports and I hope that we can build on. Oh, is that shows each testing, you know, you know, each testing group, so you get to see that pattern. I like that.
Yeah, that's great and Jordan, they both, were you going to ask a question?
Yeah, my question, looking at second grade, I think is well illustrated. So red in the urgent intervention, it's the same number of students from the first test to the second test. It may not be the same three students, right? Okay, and yellow, same story. So then, but you go to blue and you can see where, oh, the second, we, we have fewer in on watch. And you go to green at or above, kind of looks like those went to the at or above. Again, it may not be the same students, but this one to me was kind of easy to read because equal, equal, oh, that one went down and the next one went up. So I was, I, I thought, I was proud of myself for figuring this out.
So you have each of those and then let me. Thank you. And I'll pull up Jordan's just so that. So then here's Jordan's for, and he started with tenth grade, but that's okay.
Do we have that?
Yes, yeah, I, so this is tenth grade math and again, he has it, you know, so. Where the, where they're at, so. He said they're green, so their tenth grade went down green. Like I said, we can go in here and find individual students. Like I said, we went through and looked to see we have kids that have been scoring in the ninety percentile and then they score in the first percentile. So, yeah, that's. And star is, star is a scale that does not change. So it's like zeroed, I think it's sixteen hundred, I can't remember the number on there. But you can score a sixteen hundred when you're a sixth grader and have those skills, right? But it, it doesn't slide down there, it's not a percentage, just just an attainment of skill, skill, so that stays firm. It does, it doesn't change. Now, the percentage would change, so what percentage of our kids score at this level or above, that would change. And that, that is normed with people from all over the nation. So, you know, you've got really good data to compare to for that. So a kid that's scoring fourteen hundred and eighty-five as a seventh grader. That would drop down to a five hundred as a sophomore, you know, that, that's just, unless something major. But that's, that's just not going to happen, so. And then there's ninth grade and eighth grade, see, see there where we're at.
So earlier you were saying that in previous years, we were using forty percent. Forty percentile as our benchmark for proficiency on star test, correct?
Yes.
And if I understand you correctly, we have raised that to fifty percent. Because we found that the AR or the star test was not predictive of success. Or similar success proficiency in the North Dakota State assessment.
Yeah.
Okay, so what, on the first graph you showed. So last year, our proficiency was rated versus the forty percent, right? Okay, so we've raised the bar this year and so therefore it's understandable that, that our. Our proficiency will be less because we've increased our standard of proficiency from forty to fifty on the star.
Yes, yes, and like I said, trying to get that to a line and, you know, maybe that wasn't. Maybe that wasn't the correct thing to do or maybe that, but we had to try doing something. Well, we had to try adjusting something that we were doing in order to get a better picture. But really star has a very good correlation. I don't think that you guys can't see it out there, but star has a good correlation of it about. In all the different grades, it's different, but anywhere from seventy five to eighty percent chance. But I mean, it should correlate with each other at the forty percentile because star counts proficiency as the forty percentile.
Is there a way to maybe convey this to parents a little bit more about the importance of these tests? I feel like. You know, if my kid's coming home and saying, oh, I just have to take another test. And don't know the importance of it, maybe that's where some of that internal motivation could be as well. We have that encouragement at home that you need to really try your best on this because this is what we're using to.
I just think a lot of it is the kids just aren't interested, you know, I, because they come home and it's, I don't care, doesn't matter. Someone's has twenty missed assignments and so I only have two. Here, since I can make it up, I can turn them in later, you know, and the same with testing, all of that. They just, if they're allowed to take tests, you know, you didn't do it, so they want you to take it. Well, then they know they always have another shot at it and then they just don't, never been the first time until the pressure's on.
And until we can get our system so that the kids are on pace, right? So if that kid is not doing well on their standards and let's say they're having to take a test like three times, they're going to get behind pace. In those classes, once they start, you know, figuring out the pace and their pacing guide and where they're going. So if you're not doing what you need to do, you're going to fall behind pace. And then you're, that, that'll be the point where you're going to have to stay at home room, you're not going to be able to play in sports, you know. So then that's where they will, that's, I think what you're talking about is like an eligibility thing or just finishing their work. So, and again, that's changing adult behaviors because if that child already knows how to do that standard. Why do they have to do ten different worksheets in order to get to that standard, right? If they already know how to do it, we should be personalizing it and making adjustments. And that's that system that we're working, you know, to make sure that we have developed. And those are those adult behaviors that we need to change, you know, as far as the way that we do things.
Any other questions on those three?
We still do the AR, summer AR, but we don't do that anymore.
Yeah, there's not a program for summer math, you know, and it'll, our funding will determine if we'll be able to run star. Or summary.
Anything else for Mrs. Sell on this progress monitoring? All right, then let's move on to the. I'm sorry, Marsha?
Sonia, can you? Yeah, just a couple of quick things. First of all, you've got, can you hear me?
Yes, yes.
Can you, can you guys hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Just a couple of quick things, you guys have been doing moni- okay, you've been monitoring for a couple of months. And so I have a couple of quick questions for the board because the monitoring report and the questioning strategies of the board. Are truly at the heart of understanding what is happening and changing with student outcomes. You guys are doing a phenomenal job. In the framework, there are certain criteria of the monitoring report. And I'm going to ask you as a board to reflect the information you just got and tell me, did you receive the information? This goes through and aligns to the quality of the monitoring report. Did you receive a synopsis of the goal, the board student outcome goal that was being monitored this month?
Yes. I'm hearing, yes.
What goal was it?
A two point, goal two, outcome goal two.
Goal two, math. Did you get the various goal progress measures that the superintendent? Did you get reports on those information, on that information as well?
Yes.
Okay, we know the date because we know the date of the board meeting, that's fine. Did you get student results?
Yes.
That compared where you are, where you want to be in terms of your goals, annual targets and deadline targets?
Yes.
Excellent job. I loved seeing that the past and the present. Wonderful, wonderful. Did you get an explanation from the superintendent explaining the results, yes or no?
Yes.
Yes, you did. Did your superintendent give you status, not on the goal, but on the goal progress measures? As being on track or not on track?
Yes.
Yes, you did. Did your superintendent tell you what are some of the next steps?
Yes.
Yes. Wonderful. Excellent, excellent job. The second piece of a good monitoring session is just real quick and dirty, are the questions that we ask? As a board, there are questions that you wanna bring forward, and you brought some really good questions forward. Uh, we wanna make sure our questions focus on the students. Uh, we wanna make sure that they are not about adults. We want to make sure that we are not questioning the inputs, because inputs belong to who?
Superintendent.
Who do input, inputs, outputs, outcomes, inputs, outputs? Who does it, inputs belong to?
Superintendent.
Superintendent, yes. Um, and I don't know if you, your packet, some monitoring questions. So here's gonna be our focus in the next couple of months. Um, I think that we do probably for an onsite visit. And in this onsite visit, we are going to go through some, uh, actual discussion of what types of questions are there? Where do they belong? How do they fit? And you're gonna get an opportunity to categorize and group some questions in a, um, a session. Uh, and then look at devising different questions. Then we're gonna take one board member a month, and we're going to do one to on-time coaching with one board member to sort of lead the questioning strategies and switch that board member each month. So after about five or six months, everybody's gone through and led that, so you become more proficient. Because good monitoring report and active questions, what is the only way to get better? Just like playing a piano, how to get better? You practice, you practice, just like getting better at basket, you practice. We want to spend the next, maybe five months practicing, not only, um, dissecting a monitoring report, but how do we ask our questions? I'm also going to, now Sonia, you and Anna have this book, right? Do you all have this? You two have this? Um, I'm gonna send, uh, it's the AJ, right around their behalf. Who else? Does anybody else have this book?
No, we only got two copies.
You only got two copies? So I'll send you some more copies for the remainder of the board. Because our next, our next, um, session is gonna cover questioning strategies and theory of action. And so we're gonna be referencing this. So I just wanna say kudos to a fantastic monitoring report. Great, um, introductory questions. I heard questions about what is working in the interventions, what is not working in the interventions. I even went back to some of your questions on CTE. Um, some tactical questions, which like, who knows where students are falling short on the grants? Uh, some technical questions, do we still expect people to do the ACT? So we're gonna be talking about helping you with those questions and putting them together so you can, it's even better than what you did today. You're the first group in North Dakota to go through this, because nobody is as far as you are. That, pat yourselves on back.
All right, thank you, Marsha. Now, we'll move on to the consent agenda. On the consent agenda this month, which you had, uh, about ten days ago to review and ask questions, approve the January twelfth regular coordinating minutes, receive December financial reports, approve December bills, and approve an open enrollment application. Is there a motion to approve these items on the consent agenda? So Heimbug moves, is there a second?
Second.
Day seconds, any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say no. Motion passes. Uh, for the benefit of the public, uh, reports were included in the board members' packets, uh, for information only, which include a business manager's report, superintendent's report, minutes from both the Southeast Region Career Tech Center Board Meeting and the Shion Valley Special Ed Unit Board Meeting. Um, the signed board self-evaluation, which we completed last month, uh, the January board meeting time tracker, and, um, we did not do the, we did not include anything on the evaluation, because that's under.
Oh, I think it was, I think you just wanted to re- remind everybody about.
Reminder, yes, that's right. It's just a reminder that I'll be getting the, um, superintendent eval here shortly, so we can get that ready for next month. Next, we'll move on then to items for discussion and possible action. Item A, referendum discussion, and Superintendent Sell advised us there to a go that this includes some, uh, possible action on a loan resolution. Can you lead us through this, uh, item?
Karen, you want me to? Okay, okay. So in visiting with Ann from PFM, um, to apply for the, uh, loan construction, um, we have to have it in by March thirty-first, but it has to be approved and voted on by the the board. And, um, Scott Wadener is going to be gone in, uh, out of the country for a month, so we sent it in now so that we can approve it. And it's done so that we can apply for it. We, Anna and I have been working on all the paperwork. We have got, it's almost ready to go, and in discussions with Adam, that we can send it in at any time before the vote. And if the, if the referendum doesn't pass, then they can just file the paperwork. And then, um, so we have the, um, the school construction loan application, it just needs to, I think Anna has it on here, how it needs to be ordered?
Yeah, it's on the, it's on the cover sheet.
Oh, I don't have that.
I've got it in there.
Okay. So this resolution came straight from state, Scott, from the attorney.
Okay.
Yep.
We can do all this stuff ahead of time, and if the referendum doesn't pass, it doesn't. But then we've got all the paperwork ready to go.
Yep, and, and he won't be here on March fourteenth or the twenty-seventh to give us this. So.
I wanna go for it.
Anna and I have almost, we're waiting just for a couple of things to complete all the paperwork for everything, and we, her and I would like to submit it, and then it can get reviewed, and if there's anything they need in addition, we've got plenty of time to respond instead of three days.
All right, so board members, in your packet, uh, the cover, sh- cover sheet for this agenda item includes this motion. Uh, I move to approve the resolution authorizing school construction loan application. That resolution is in your packet in full, and that is what we are asking for action on today. Is there a motion for approval?
So.
Nagel moves to approve the resolution authorizing school construction loan application. Is there a second? Sire seconds. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? So I would just mention for, for, for transparency, uh, again, in our referendum materials that have been shared, the, um, the cost of the project and the annual debt services calculated based on a bond, uh, bonds on the open market, something like a four and a quarter, or in an eight, seven, eight, three, eight, something, interest rate. And, uh, should the referendum pass and we are able to, uh, acquire uh, state's, uh, school construction loan, the interest rate would be two percent, which would be a significant savings for the project. So in my view, we just really wanna have everything in order and make sure our application is the best it can possibly be in that competitive, uh, loan process. Any further discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll. Monica Heimbug.
Yes.
Sheila Nagel.
Yes.
Brian Sire.
Yes.
Rhonda Day.
Yes.
Sonya Neal. Yes, motion passes five to zero. Is there any other, uh, anything else we wanna highlight on the referendum progress?
You know, Lori, Lori is on, and, um, she's gonna join us and, um, just kinda give us an update on the referendum process.
Good morning, Lori. Can you hear me?
Good morning, yeah. I turned my camera on, but did not turn my speaker out, or my microphone. Uh, yeah, so the referendum communication, um, and the referendum process itself is, is in full swing. Um, the, the district is doing an excellent job of informing residents and getting the information out to as many people as possible to help educate the community on, on what the plan is. Um, and how they can vote, what the tax impact would be for them, and then any other resources they, they may need to help them make an educated decision. Um, there is a group that meets weekly that is just to stay, um, on top of all the communication tools. There's a lot of them, as they know, there's a lot of reviewing. Um, there's emails, there's social media, there's meetings in the community, there's letters to the editor, um, there's community, uh, open houses and, and, uh, facility tours that you're offering. So just so many pieces that, you know, different avenues to really try to get, um, reach as many residents as possible to make sure they're informed. And that's what the goal of the district is. Uh, and, and there is also a mailing that should hit mailboxes, I would say, maybe end of this week or next week. And that's a postcard, um, with, with some of the information and, and really directing your residents back to the dedicated website that, that you guys, that we created to help, um, consolidate all the information in one spot. So always kind of pushing them back to that location, because that's where they're gonna find the most information that they, that they need for all of the work that the, the district and the board has been doing. So. Um, so far, so good, and we're down to about five weeks. So, uh, it's a lot of work. I don't know if Anna sleeps, but, but she seems to be very efficient and, and along with the rest of the, uh, committee on, you know, responding and doing everything you can to try to help, to help make this successful. And so kudos to you guys as a district. It's not an easy process, and you're kind of paving the way for other districts in the area, which I think is, is pretty, pretty remarkable. Um, so five weeks, we just gotta keep pushing and, and keep doing what we're doing. Any questions on, on what's happening as far as commu- communication?
No, but I'm gonna make a comment. The resounding theme I keep hearing is that if someone doesn't know what this is all about, it's their own fault. Because the district has done such an outstanding job of pushing the information out. So, kudos to everyone.
Excellent.
Questions for Lori? I hear none, but Lori, we do appreciate you and your efforts. Uh, Kirk was down here, uh, two nights ago and, um, trying to, uh, guide us in setting up our, uh, a, a, a group of supporters and, and their efforts. So uh, we appreciate that. Next, we'll, uh, then move on to item B, uh, approve hiring our construction manager. Uh, Mrs. Sell, would you, uh, share with us the process by which we invited uh, proposals for construction managers and why we need to do this now and, uh, our next step?
Sure, so, um, Shannon, how many weeks ago did we publish it? We had published it over, can we get, we posted two or three times.
Yeah, it, it, yeah, in January, right, yeah. Um, to for, um, a construction manager. Now, the construction manager will not start working for us, or they won't be under contract with us until after the referendum passes. If the referendum does not pass, the construction manager position is, I don't know, not null and void, or whatever, it, it doesn't happen. So anyway, so what happened was then this was sent out, we advertised for it. Um, then companies reached out to us and asked us for the RFQ, which I included for you, and this is, you know, if anybody wants to see if the RFQ went out. And did we have about five or six?
Eight.
Eight, and asked for the RFQs, but we actually only got one qualifying, um, applicant. Uh, we received one, but it was late and there's very clear deadlines. Um, we could have opened it back up, but then that would have delayed it more, and um, they knew it was late. In fact, they contacted me and said, you know, please consider us for another position. So they knew that I mean, the world of construction, I guess, or whatever, that, that there's, you know, things that you have to meet. So ICS, um, was the only applicant. So, um, we had a committee that came together, two board members were on that. Um, myself, Shannon, Dave were on that, and we went through ICS, and we had a rubric that we had to score, and it was decided, um, that we would reach out to some other schools and talk to them and get some references, just to make sure that we're covering all of our bases. Glowing reviews, and I contacted, you know, mid-sized schools, large-type schools, Grand Forks, the Midge, um, that, four different schools I contacted, and they, some of them have done multiple projects with ICS and said, absolutely, we could go back and do it again. And, um, also I heard from one of the schools that if Lori is on your team, yeah, that's fantastic, you're in great hands. So, um, I feel comfortable recommending to you as a board that we hire, um, or in, go under contract with, um, ICS is to take the construction manager position for us for the, um, possible project, once the referendum is hopefully approved, or, you know, if it is approved. All right. Um, for purposes of continuing discussion, is there a motion to approve Oak's Public Schools hiring ICS as our construction manager, should the bond referendum pass?
Oh, my goodness.
Sire moves that motion. Is there a second? Nagel seconds. All right, is there any discussion?
I question, so if the, uh, referendum doesn't pass, and in six months we go back to referendum, do we have to go through this process again, or would this stay in place?
Oh, I, that is, that's a great question, and Lori's on here, but I would assume we would have to go back. I'm assuming, because, you know, obviously the project's gonna be different, the specs, you know, the project would be, yeah. Because this is just for this project, if anybody wants to see their, it's here and there.
So for, again, for transparency for the public, um, ICS came on board as a, a consultant that we hired to help us do a long-range facilities review and plan. When did that happen?
That was, was that last April? Do you, April, April?
And, and we engaged them, uh, to work for us to complete a long-range plan. How much have we paid and how much do we owe them for the services that they have provided us so far? Sorry to catch you by surprise.
We are paying full, we do not owe them. I just wrote my last check, uh, for eighty-six hundred dollars, eight thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars, and that completes our contract of, I think it was seventeen thousand to do the long-term assessment plan.
And we will owe, um, them some more money for that second stage. Do you remember when they came, there was the tier one, you know, and that was the assessment? And, and we will still be getting a long-term facilities plan from them, even whether the referendum passes or doesn't, that's still a product of that tier one. And then the tier two is, you know, the whole communication, and I'm going out for the referendum, and I believe Lori said that was about nine thousand or ninety-five hundred or she, I don't know if she's on there, she can pop that on.
Yeah, that's ninety-five.
Ninety-five hundred. So all of the stuff with all of rap, you know, I mean, all this stuff is ninety-five hundred dollars, so. Okay, and so in my twelve years on the board, we have not completed a, an entire facilities assessment such as this. And I just wanna say that I feel like, uh, regardless of the outcome, uh, we, we have done our due diligence, and we have, um, we will have good information about our facilities going forward and what needs. And, and I, I trust that it will reveal that there are more needs that will need to be addressed in coming years. And, but, but we have identified, uh, the most critical, urgent, maybe even emergency-type needs that we have.
I just feel really like protected. I don't know if that's the word, to have them working with us as a, you know, a construction manager, because they're there for us. They're not there for the contractor, they're not there for the architect, they're not there for the engineer, they're there for us, they're there to protect us, and I'm, I, I'm not a facilities person. I don't think you're gonna find a superintendent that knows facilities enough. Maybe Mr. Spellerberg would know facilities enough, but, um, I don't.
He could do this in his spare time.
Yeah. Oh, really? Um, uh, but just to know that they're there and they're
But just to know that they're there and they're gonna be conducting us and they're gonna be on that job site and they're gonna be watching and making sure that things go well. Yeah, that that makes you rest a little easier at night. Did we have someone serving in the role of construction manager for our floor stabilization project? The architect, but they weren't a construction manager, but they they did a good job too, Ryan watched over it, but I think because of the scope of the project and it wasn't like. Bringing in all sorts of different um subs, you know, it was that floor, so she, he was able to help us and he caught a couple of things that like. I wouldn't have had a clue and nobody else caught, but he knew, right, so.
And was he on site constantly?
But in this case, we've been assured according to their proposal that they will have uh an expert on site daily. Either them or the architect or the engineer, but there will be one of those soft positions or whatever that word is. There will be somebody here from during the construction season, every day, all day, there will be somebody on site. And then um the construction manager will be with us from pre-construction, so right after if the bond passes, they'll be with us. Up until even post-construction, you know, making sure that everything is in place and. Is finished correctly. What about even years later, three or four, five years later, if if we're installing. Equipment that's expected to last twenty-five years and there are issues with it. Um, is there, is there an end time to their role in in holding contractors and suppliers accountable for. Uh, quality and warranty?
That's a great question, I don't know.
Lori.
How about Lori?
I would love to answer that. Um, yes. Uh, so typically you'll have a one-year parts and labor warranty um on a major equipment and. It it and and don't worry, there are, it's a longer warranty on um. On some other pieces of large equipment, but one-year guaranteed parts and labor. So what, as a construction manager, will have an eleven-month walkthrough. And that walkthrough will be to identify anything that is not operating properly. So we can get those things addressed within that year. Um, and that allows you to go through each one of the the heating and cooling seasons. You know, our four seasons of the year and uh make sure that, you know, things change if it's going from. Thirty below to to ninety, right? So making sure everything works in each season. We also will have a full um operation and it's called O and M manuals. And those will be to identify all the contractors, everybody who worked on the project, who they are. And then also every piece of equipment that went into your building. That is for the district to then continue. Dave can have that at his fingertips, um because after a year, then it's not that it wouldn't be covered. Or some things that would be taken care of, but it won't necessarily come back to ICS as a construction manager. Um, now with that said, I don't really go anywhere ever. So I'm always here to help you through things that that aren't working. We don't, we don't just walk away, right? So if something comes up, we're there to help you as a district figure out the right solution and and how to get it done. So if that helps um explain the kind of the different stages of what the construction manager would do.
Other questions? Thank you, Lori.
You're welcome.
Uh, she answers my texts like twenty-four seven.
So she knows you don't sleep.
And how how would ICS be compensated? What would be? What what is it, you know, it, I don't quite understand, is it a percentage? Uh, is it a per hour or is it? How how do you figure out what we pay for these services?
So there's two parts to that. There is one, that's a percentage and that would be a fixed fee that we would negotiate. And typically is two to two and a half percent of the project. Um, and that's for your upfront um pre-construction. Uh, um, services, right? So as we go through design, we'll be continuing to update the budget. And um review drawings, making sure that, you know, the the feasibility of of what they're talking about. And and what the expectations of the district were are being met. Um, and then during the construction phase, then that is the site services are reimbursable. So what that is, is we do utilize our hourly rate to figure out how much it's gonna. Um, you know, it's it's based on an hourly rate, but what we like to do is once we get the architect and engineer on board. And can decide the duration of construction, then we can calculate what that cost would be. For site services and that is what Anna was talking about is ICS would have a site superintendent on site every day. During construction, every day for eight hours, whatever, you know, whatever that schedule is. They would be there overseeing the construction, holding construction meetings, making sure the contractors are meeting their deadlines. And the schedule of the project and so they're not holding up the next schedule, right, or the next contractor. So we develop what we feel that would cost and then we lock it in with the district on this is how much you pay monthly. So Shannon can really budget for that and there's not a big surprise, like one month or on, we have so many hours and, you know. It's a huge bill and the next month it's not. We'll come up with it together, this is, we'll show it, be very transparent. This is how much time we're gonna have to be on there, these are the guys that are gonna have to work on it. And then we can lock it in so every month you pay X amount and and can anticipate that throughout the construction period.
With information, I feel smarter. Thank you, Lori. Anything else before we vote on this motion? Any further discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll. Sheila Nagel.
Yes.
Monica Heimbuck. Rhonda Day.
Yes.
Brian Sire.
Yes.
Sonya Miel. Yes, motion passes five to zero to approve hiring ICS as our construction manager. Uh, finally, uh discussion for item in action is approval of a. Sire plumbing plumbing bill, would you, uh Mrs. Seller or Chime, would you please um tell us why Brian Sire is doing this yet again?
Um, about two weeks ago, maybe now, uh the electricity went out at the school. And uh when the electricity did come back on, the uh boilers did not pick on. So um our faithful uh maintenance crew uh was. Locked in at six forty-five in the morning.
On a Saturday.
On a Saturday morning and they they couldn't get the boilers to pick on, so they used the fuel oil backup. And started to get some heat. Um, they called, um, they were able to uh get Bob German to help them. It was a switch, I think, to get the the boilers back working. And at that time, then they did kind of a tour around the school. Um, when Bobby first got there, the library was at fifty-two degrees and they went to the elementary room and to the northwest corner, which is Mrs. Roberts' room. And they had a water uh pipe already frozen in her room. So they shut the water off and proceeded to warm it up and of course, once it warmed up, then water started leaking. And they had to replace the pipe, which is where Sire Plumbing and Heating came in and they had to replace the pipe. And. He didn't, that was it.
Superpower pipe replacement.
So for the eighty dollars of labor and the five dollars for mileage on a Saturday to fix um a pipe.
Okay, so for, again, for transparency, uh in our packet, we have a copy of that eighty-five dollar bill. Is there a motion to approve that bill? Heimbuck moves, is there a second? Day seconds, is there any discussion? Any discussion? I'll just say thank you, thank you for coming in. Any further discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll. Brian Sire. Uh, Monica Heimbuck. Rhonda Day.
Yes.
Sheila Nagel.
Yes.
Sonya Miel. Yes, motion passes four to zero with Sire abstaining. Uh, this brings us to the end of our meeting. Our next meeting will be Friday, March the fifteenth at seven o'clock AM. I was just gonna give you an update on the ballots. I have five ballots that have been received. I have twenty-two other ballots that have been sent out that I am waiting to receive back. Okay, thank you. Uh, anyway, back to future meetings, um Friday, March fifteenth, which will be the day after Election Day. Uh, superintendent evaluation needs to be completed by law that day and I will be giving you information shortly. Uh, then we will need to have a special meeting Wednesday, March twenty-seventh, because again, by law, we're required to canvas the votes. Of the March fourteenth election, exactly thirteen days after, and we have that at seven AM, I guess.
I just said it at seven AM.
Right, and then uh Friday, April nineteenth, seven AM. Any other comments for the good of the order? If not, I'll declare the meeting adjourned at. Oh, I'm sorry.
Marcia Hazard. Have a comment, Sonia. Thank you. All right, I was screaming, but I have, I was on mute, so. Um, just a couple of words of gratitude for this board. Of all, uh Anna, thank you so much for taking time during the mid-winter conference to. Meet with some of our superintendents that are going through Be Legendary, your comments and support to some people who were just getting started in this process. Was invaluable. Um, and we always love, you guys are so willing to share. And I also wanna give a word of thanks to Brian and Sheila who have been working so very hard. On the superintendent evaluation and uh the processes with that. Um, I will let you know that the first two meetings will not be included in your time tracking and your. Um, work for the next quarter, uh because those are required by code, I mean, century code, you have to do those things. And so anything that's required by law, we don't set time, so that's that's a good thing, but. I'm just, I just can't tell you, but a proud mama, I feel like, with you guys. You make me feel good. Thank you.
All right, thank you for your help, Marcia. So. Now, now I will declare the meeting adjourned at eight twenty-two AM and wish everybody a great day. Stay for a tour if you have time and if you will.